Good evening and welcome to the September fifteenth, two thousand and eleven meeting of the Planning Commission for the City of West Sacramento. As tradition, we will start our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance and this evening I will ask Commissioner Blackburn to lead the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First item on the agenda is presentations by the public on matters not on the agenda but within the jurisdiction of the Planning Commission. At this time, I have no request to speak, so we will move on to correspondence and staff communications from David Tilly.
Thank you, Commissioner Lebig. It's been awhile since we've been here, been here certainly since I've been here. If you want to point out, there is only one matter correspondence, that is a reminder regarding the microphone use. We want to make sure that everyone is, you know, trying to lean in close so we can get it on the audio and for our audience at home. And regarding council, did meet last week, the only matter they took up that was related to land use was the ongoing saga with redevelopment. They did not take any specific action on that item as it remains an ongoing matter, not only for us but, you know, statewide. And that concludes our correspondence summary from the Secretary this evening.
Thank you. Next item is the election of the Planning Commission Secretary. At this time, Charlene Hamilton, the existing Planning Commission Secretary, has recommended that we elect Mr. David Tilly as the new Secretary.
I'll move that recommended action.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Sandin, seconded by Commissioner Chase. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none.
Thank you very much.
And next is... Welcome.
That's kind of a tongue-in-cheek one, huh? Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is disclosures of ex parte communication and given that this is a city matter, I wouldn't expect there would be. So, moving on to the consent agenda. Any need to discuss?
Can make a motion that we approve the minutes from August fourth.
Moved by Commissioner Moore, seconded by Commissioner Galván. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposition? Hearing none. Next item on the agenda, public hearing regarding the wireless telecommunications facility policy update. This would be Kathy Ellen.
Yes, Kathy will be presenting this item then, when she's done with her presentation, but before we move to discussion, there's a little bit I'm going to like to add at that time, so.
Good evening. The city's wireless policy was adopted in nineteen ninety-seven. As I'm sure you're aware, it hasn't been updated since that time. However, wireless usage since nineteen ninety-seven has increased exponentially. The vast majority of people these days seem to have at least one wireless home, one wireless phone in their household, and usage for devices such as tablets has increased as well, which also utilize the wireless network. In the city, we employ a reverse nine-one-one system. Landlines are enrolled in that, however wireless phones are not. The fire department is initiating a system that should be online by the end of this year, which will allow wireless phones to also receive reverse nine-one-one calls. However, having a wireless network where signals are strong throughout the city will vastly help the effectiveness of that. In the city, there's currently twenty-three wireless facilities, of those seventeen are in the north part of the city, six are in south port. Of the six in south port, five of them do allow wireless carriers. The Planning Commission did hear a workshop on this item on August fourth and presented comments and suggestions to revisions to staff's original draft. In response to those, staff did edit the policy further and to recap some of the things staff further changed. Colocations are now to be required on all new wireless facilities, not designed to conceal their equipment within another structure. All new wireless facilities must be stealthed. We've added a distance requirement for facilities near residential properties, including a minimum siding distance of two times the height of the tower with a maximum siding requirement of five hundred feet. The reason for the five hundred foot maximum is towers that are over that would not require a wireless facilities permit but would fall under the zoning administrator action. We also, at the commission's request, looked at the distance requirement for towers that are still able to accept colocations. We did increase the distance for towers that are near a tower that could still co-locate from one thousand to fifteen hundred feet. And we also finally looked at the public noticing requirements. We increased that from three hundred feet to a five hundred foot radius to bring it consistent with other noticing requirements. And also, VA items and the wireless permit items will both be publicly noticed as the commission requested. As revised, the policy should now conform with state and federal laws regarding discretionary approval of colocation requests and emissions conditions and periodic safety monitoring. This concludes my presentation. As David mentioned, he has some further comments prior to taking questions from the commission.
Thank you, Kathy.
Yes, again, thank you, Kathy. Before we, you know, get into a discussion about the, you know, the item before us this evening, just from staff's perspective, we want to acknowledge that, you know, there may not be, you know, comfort on the commission as a whole regarding where this policy is at, at this point in time, you know, since your last meeting. And if that, you know, is the case this evening, then staff would proffer a suggestion that rather than go into an extensive discussion this evening, that we might actually take this matter to the council directly on a more, on a more five thousand foot level, not necessarily about the specifics of the changes that we're proposing, but more about the wireless issue overall and seek direction from the council about not only this issue but the amount of resources that they feel are appropriate to be dedicated toward this matter at this point in time, knowing that this is not a matter that's been on our work plan or has any, you know, line item in any budget. And once we got to council and received direction, if they wanted us to continue to work on this in some way, shape, or form, we would certainly will be back to the Planning Commission, hopefully with some more specific direction of not only about, you know, the level of resources but also about the issue itself. And we hope, we would hope that would help inform the discussion not only from staff level but for the commission as well, you know, since the matter would ultimately be, you know, arbitrated by the council anyway. So we want to throw that out there in the beginning if that would be a way the commission would want to go this evening, that if there is, you know, high degree of consensus about the changes, we certainly could proceed this evening. And so I wanted to bring that to the commission's attention, you know, before we got into it this evening. And so I'll return it to your commission if there is a desire to go to council and come back later or if we want to proceed this evening and hopefully achieve consensus on a lot of the recommended changes.
Okay, thank you. I think maybe some initial discussion then of whether or not we are on target or if we're completely off target from where the commission was hoping this would go. If we have some suggestions, edits, maybe we can continue this meeting then and then come up with a vote. That's how I'm thinking. Would you, or would you like a decision right now whether or not we would just...
Well, if there's any, perhaps if there's any type of straw polling or that, you know, could be done, if there is, you know, still a lot of reservation about the policy as it's been presented to you this evening since the prior meeting, or if the commission, you know, does feel that on a, and hopefully on a fairly strong majority basis, that we can get a recommendation this evening and, you know, proceed to council. But if we're not quite there yet or if it's very close, perhaps we might want to, you know, kind of take a timeout at the, this commission level, you know, get, seek some further direction from council and then return.
I know this is a policy that we've been requesting be updated since the previous version was several years ago, and our city has changed along with the technology and the use of the technology. So, straw poll, I guess we're looking for whether or not anybody has enough reservation of this document that we're not going to be able to get through it this evening and pass the concept as a whole to council. So I will, I'll start on the, on my right with Greg Chase, whether or not...
I'm generally, I think, supportive of the revisions that are submitted. I had a series of kind of edits but nothing major, so I didn't know whether it would be appropriate to pass those on to staff or just wait until this comes back to us. But generally speaking, I support the...
Okay.
The ordinance.
I think for myself, I generally support this, but I have a number of questions that I'm very uncomfortable with until I can get them answered. So, if it was a choice tonight, I'd probably, as it stands, I'd probably want to send it to council and get their input and then have it come back to us.
Okay.
I would echo Commissioner Moore. I'm generally in support of it. I do have some questions that I thought maybe could be worked through and discussed tonight.
Okay. I did have some questions and I've talked to staff and most of my questions were answered or I got some clarification. I do also have some suggested edits as well and without Ms. Sandin.
I think staff did a good job from the last time we met and talked about this. I could, I am generally supportive of this although because of the far-reaching effects of this policy and in terms of safety and business coming to the city, I think we may need some guidance from, from council. And if it takes, it does, I think realistically, Mr. Tilly, I think if we're asking for more research, more writing and all that, I do think that's a resource question that should go to council about how much do you want, how much do you want this modified and what are you willing to invest? So I think that's a good question to ask.
I'm sorry, I'm not sure if I actually captured, yeah, for yourself, whether or not you feel we can work through your concerns, whether or not it's covered or whether or not...
Yeah, I was fine. I'm fine, I actually, I'm fine moving it forward at the same time. It's just, it's just an interesting question to ask if that would be a better starting place for us rather than each of us having five edits or twenty edits or thirty edits and it, and we don't get to the right, we may not, we may all be happy with our edits but we may not get to the right place or a good policy for the city, so.
I feel comfortable with moving it to council and then coming back to it.
Council, okay. Jeremy?
Yeah, great job on the, on what you guys have done so far here. I'd say, yeah, let's send it up to the council and see what they have to say. I don't know if it's standard for reviewing a policy, but I would almost want to see what a cell tower company would think of this, you know, like who would, the ultimate consumer of this policy, I'd want to see if they would think that this is followable or if this meets, you know, what they would expect as a requirement for a city, you know, is this like a standard policy? Does this make it easy to, is this clear defined on how we want to build our cell towers and that sort of thing? I'd be interested to know that, too.
From my count, that is four to move it to council, four direction, three to move forward this evening, although from what I understand that at least two of the four that said move it to council are in general agreement with how it's written. So I'm not sure if that, that actually helps or actually answered the question.
Well, it's certainly, you know, up to the commission, you know, the commission's prerogative. You know, we feel like we have made some progress, you know, on this, you know, with the limited amount of time and resources we've had to dedicate toward this. And I feel like, you know, we've made, you know, some headway. I don't think, you know, anybody is entirely, you know, one hundred and ten percent, you know, happy with where it is. I know I'd like some, I would, you know, ideally, you know, we would do a little bit more on this, you know, on this particular topic. And, you know, the changes we have made have been, you know, primarily to address the, at least the areas we feel like in recent months have been most, you know, problematic, you know, with their application to real projects. And we also recognize there are some portions of it that may, that may have, may be inconsistent with, you know, state and federal law that has been passed, you know, since this policy has been adopted. So it is important that those particular provisions are amended. But I think Commissioner Sandin's comments were particularly well-stated tonight in that, you know, this certainly is a citywide issue. We have talked, you know, we've shown a lot of maps showing Southport and whatnot, but that has really been kind of a subset of what is an issue, you know, you know, citywide. And at this point in time, you know, we do have, you know, at least one application, you know, that's pending and we've, you know, want to get this, you know, the policy moved forward. But even so, you know, it is really is primarily a question of resources this evening and if, you know, we can get by with, if tonight, if some of the edits, suggested edits that commissioners have are, you know, more of editorial nature, those I think we can probably accommodate. But if there are, you know, elements of the policy that need, you know, fairly, you know, big changes or changes in direction, you know, we may not be prepared to absorb those tonight and that we might, might be preferable to go to council and get some direction on this issue overall, not, again, as I said, not necessarily whether we want the council to look at this policy as we've amended it, thus proposed amended thus far, but more about the wires issue in general. So it's, it has, it has a lot of different implications and it's why we frankly have struggled with it quite a bit in trying to get this to the commission's liking.
Can I ask for some clarification from a couple of the commissioners then? Moving it to council as, for example, Ms. Blackburn, you mentioned that you're okay with it and ready to move it to council. My understanding would be if we don't feel that we can come together as a commission, then we would pass it to council for general guidance or, staff would go to council for general guidance and then come back to the Planning Commission with a different product? So our step, our step right now is whether or not we feel we can move forward on this or that we are not comfortable with the document as it, as it stands and we would like additional direction from council? So that's the question. I'm not sure if I posed it correctly.
I didn't have any questions as far as, there was, I think, one and it was, I didn't understand grammatically the change, but other than that, there wasn't anything else that I had any questions on. I was, I'm comfortable with the changes.
Okay. Similar, Jeremy? You mentioned you wanted to pass it to council.
Yeah, I thought that was in regard to, this is an additional workload on the staff and we wanted to see if the city council wanted to set up some sort of additional funds or resources for this. That's what I thought the question was pertaining to.
It's kind of my impression that actually, that I think we could probably get through this this evening unless there's objection to that. Mr. Chase?
I'd like to also reiterate someone else's comments that the staff, I think, has done a great job on this and thank you very much for, for bringing it forward. I just had, I was wondering if it would be appropriate to ask for one clarification. The three colored maps that were included in here, the different distances, I had a hard time understanding exactly what they, what they were. If, would it be, could you respond to that briefly?
Sure, yeah. At, you know, their existing wireless policy makes that reference to the, within five hundred feet of residential and it spells out certain requirements if a project is proposed within that. So we, what we wanted to show graphically what that would mean if that were a formal setback from residential and that's what the five hundred foot buffer map shows. All those areas that are shaded in, I'm not sure what that, what that color you would call it, are all those properties that are residentially zoned that are within five hundred feet of other zones. And then we provide a similar map at three hundred feet and a similar map at one hundred feet to show graphically where facilities could potentially go in, using Southport as an example, since that's where we've seen two applications been filed in the last year. And with the maps, I were, turn out to kind of, to show is that there are very, very limited locations where wireless facilities could go if buffers of varying distances were required from residentially zoned properties. And so the areas on there that are, you know, kind of with us, with this, with that speckle or spatter pattern are those areas where wireless facilities theoretically could go and, but at diff, with the different buffers requirements in there, you know, you show that even at a hundred feet buffer, there are very limited locations where they could go. And so we wanted to show this graphically because I think that's the best way because there was been a lot of discussion in the past about the five hundred feet.
I think if I could, I think what confused me was that the, the three maps that had different colors indicating those, the areas, although the color differ, is different on each map, it seems as though each, on each map, the color is covering exactly the same area. That's, that's what had me confused.
Well, at this scale, you know, that, you know, showing, you know, half the city and trying to look at one hundred feet to five hundred feet, there, you know, if we, if we were to, you know, blow these maps up, you know, to full size, it might be, it might show a lot more distinction between the three of them. But, you know, the objective here was to show with the different buffers, you know, what properties are at least theoretically available for a facility if a certain buffer distance was required from any residentially zoned properties. And so we try to show that at one hundred feet, three hundred feet, and five hundred feet, and each one of them, you know, indicates that there's a very limited number of locations.
I think you've answered my question. It's really a matter of scale in terms of being able to see this, so thank you.
I'm going to make a recommendation. It seems like, I think we can probably work through it if we can spend some time discussing and then after a short period, if it looks like we are going to be at an impasse, make the recommendation to go to council. But I believe that we maybe even benefit from hearing each other's discussion to make that decision. Also, we have a public hearing tonight. This is a public hearing, so I, I do believe I need to open the public hearing to be able to take comments from the public. So at this time, I will open the public hearing, but having no comments from the public, I will quickly close the public hearing and move it back to discussion to the council. So, I'm sorry, to the commission. I'm not the one that usually trips up on that one, so. Mr. Moore?
Since...
You waited till last, till last, last time? I'd actually like to hear your comments first this time.
I don't mind going first. I would tell you, my, my initial comment is that I didn't see anything wrong with the old ordinance other than the fact that more people are starting to use cell phones. The thing I was encouraged about no matter what, and before I start, I got to tell Kathy, I think you did a great job on this. I really was impressed on how many of our comments you were able to put into this thing. And I think we're, we're getting close. The thing that's interesting, even on the maps that we just talked about, is that there's areas available no matter what, whether it's five hundred feet or a hundred feet. There are obviously a few more areas at a hundred feet than there are at five hundred, but all of Southport has areas that can be utilized out there without changing the five hundred feet at all, which is not what I'm proposing. But I, I would just let you know, there are still plenty of locations in Southport at five hundred feet, you know, and all they have to do is just, you may not be on Jefferson Boulevard, but you could be right off of Jefferson. And that was encouraging to me because I thought there would be no locations left. And with that being said, I'll give you my few comments I have on this. And the, my initial comment, and we talk about five hundred feet throughout this document as being the absolute maximum footage away from stuff, and I think that's fine, but I think when we get talking about structures that are going to be built under that five hundred foot limit, I'm not quite sure that I understood quite how it was all going to work. And one of the things we talked about last time in this is that if they got closer than five hundred feet, then we should look at height limitations. And one of the, the comments that I, I know I personally made, and I thought it was made a couple other times, is that there was a document in here that said, maybe if you get within five hundred feet, that you should, your height limit should be that of the property next to it. So if your residential property height limit is forty feet, fifty feet, whatever it is, that height limit for that when it gets closer than five hundred feet should be at that level. And I didn't see anything about a height limit if it got closer than five hundred feet. And I thought that was something that we talked about. And then also in that same comment, if it got closer than five hundred feet, I was thinking that it was going to be disguised somewhat, be it looked like a tree, a flagpole, whatever. And again, I didn't see any of that in this discussion. Did you want to comment or did you just want to hear what I got to say? You act like you wanted to say something.
Oh, I was just going to address your initial comment. In, in terms of the, the height being the same as the residential district, we, we took the height requirements actually from what is currently prescribed in the zoning ordinance, which gives towers and poles, et cetera, a thirty-foot height extension over what is in the zone, which is, which is how we base the heights of the tower. And in terms of, of the steffing, we actually added a steffing requirement that any new facilities, towers or whatever, are going to have to be stealthed in some way, be it a tree or a windmill or whatever. So we did address that.
And I read that steffing in there, I just didn't see when it got into the exception part of it, how it, maybe it just, you're supposed to assume that you know that. But I didn't see that, so I was, I was just coming. I, I will start some of my comments with, and this will be attachment three, just so you know where I am.
Okay.
On the... On the prohibited facilities. There isn't a page number here, so I can't tell you, but it'd be the second page of attachment three. See where I am?
Yes.
Okay. In item one, it talks about wireless communication facilities that are not designed to accommodate co-location or able to conceal the equipment within another structures. I, and now I'm not even sure that this is what I want to do, but I, I was thinking that instead of "or", it should say something like, unless you're able to conceal it, the equipment within another structure. I, because I always thought that was acceptable if you could conceal it.
Well, that was what we were attempting to say is that if you can conceal it in a,
Have somebody do this better on grammar.
If you can conceal it in a tower or a sign or whatever, obviously, at, at that point, you're probably not going to be able to fit more than one carrier, but we figured that would be okay. You've hidden it from view, so in that instance, you know, we'll, we'll let you be the only one. But if, if that's not the situation and you're building a, a, a structure of so, of some kind, you're going to have to put more than one on the tower.
If you think that's the correct wording, that's fine. I just thought that it's.
I think, I think it reads like what you're, you're saying. It's, uh, the way I'm reading it.
And I'm fine. I, I just brought that up. On number two, though, you know, it's talking about you can, if we have large parcels, you can have more than one tower on it. Again, I was trying to go back to what we had talked about. And you really should try to co-locate those whenever possible. And not have a couple of towers on it, just because it's a large parcel.
Yeah, so I want to kind of address the co-location, you know, matter a little bit. We certainly, that certainly has been an underlying theme in the policy since an inception, and it's inception, and remains being an underlying theme. And we, at a, you know, staff level, uh, we encourage that and stress that, uh, whenever we possibly can. And we certainly want to see that happen. In the real world, it has proven to be more difficult to achieve in many cases than we would otherwise prefer. We have towers here in town that are owned by tower companies who are in the business of building towers and renting out space on them. And we also have towers that are built by carriers and owned by carriers themselves. We did look at the twenty-three facilities that we have in town. And not surprisingly, the ones that are owned by tower companies, such as the tree pole at the end of Linden, are chock full of almost every, they've crammed five separate carriers on that ninety-two foot pole out there at the end of Linden. Conversely, um, the ones that have been built by carriers, such as the Verizon one out in Southport Business Park, the T-Mobile one out by Southport Business Park, and even the longstanding AT&amp;T owned tower down in the Southeast Village, actually have no co-locations on them. And our, our spidey sense tells us that that is directly related to, um, the competitive nature of the industry. And so we want to see co-locations as much as possible, but we recognize that our ability to force those is limited. And there frankly is a lot of disincentive for tho- those towers that are built by carriers to put their competitors on there, even for a meager, you know, you know, fifteen hundred bucks a month in rent. You know, it's not worth it to them to enhance their competitors' situation. So we have attempted to stress co-location, you know, through here as much as possible. And we've been careful to not even indirectly or, um, put, put anything in here that would discourage co-location or take away the, any incentive for a tower company to build a facility, which would by, by its very nature, would be set up for co-location. Because our experience has been that when the carriers build them themselves, um, they have little to no interest in co-locating with their competitors. And that's what we've been kind of wrestling with as it pertains to the co-location issues. We want to see it happen, but our, our ability to compel it, um, is limited.
Is it really? It, it, I mean, should we put something in this that? I, I. I mean Jeff will probably fall off his chair over there, you know, but I mean, there should probably be something that we can do or not allow a pole to go in when there's available service in the area. And in the area, to me, is pretty wide there. You know, I mean, you wouldn't put one on Jefferson Boulevard if you can go over to where we moved that one tower over to the storage facility. Why wouldn't you go there? That would work just as well for you.
I think, I think, um, David is right, that there's a number of provisions that have been added in here that are intended to encourage and in fact to require the applicant to make an affirmative statement that they're prepared to allow co-location on their facility, and they've designed it that way. I think that there is a problem with an absolute requirement that you co-locate when by federal law, we have to allow wireless communications facilities to be put in where there is a demonstrated lack of coverage. And you're, you are setting up a potential conflict there between our obligations under federal law and the city's policy. So I would, and I have recommended that we can do what we can to encourage co-location. But, and I think we've done what we can to make co-location easier than building a new tower, so that there are built-in market-based incentives to do the co-location. But David's right, when the tower is being put up by one company, they don't have any particular desire to co-locate with another company. And I, you know, we can do what we can to try to encourage that. But I'm, I'm not comfortable that we can put in a requirement that says you can't put up a facility if there's another tower somewhere.
But you know, part of what we granted, when we granted one of these, pick a name, it doesn't matter which company, but we granted them the pole, was that it be built to accept multiple users.
Right, and that's in the policy now.
There, therefore, if they don't have multiple users on that pole, are they not then in violation of what they took the permit out for?
No, if they say, we could never reach an agreement with the company. We were willing to co-locate, but we couldn't reach an agreement. How do we, how does the city judge the accuracy or the, you know, whether that's a true statement? They say, we told them we'd let them co-locate if they paid us ten thousand dollars a month. And the other company says, I'm not going to pay that kind of money. So who's right?
So then should our, should our discretionary policy be that that company that had one pole that didn't co-locate couldn't have another pole in town?
No, we can't do that. What would be the authority to do that? If they come to you and say, I have a tower here, I have a gap over here, I need a tower over here. We can't tell them, you can't put that tower up. Yes, you've demonstrated that you don't have any coverage over there, but you were bad and you didn't co-locate over here. So now you can't put up a new tower. Can't do that.
Anyway, I will go on with my comments. I mean, I'm actually into the document itself now. And one of the things that I thought was important for us is that if we do adopt a new policy, that things come back as a zoning administrator item, and we get a chance to review them at least for a while. And I see that we're having them come back, but they're coming back as an information item and not something that we can talk about. And I still believe it should come back and be something that we talk about. At least for a year or so and see. I don't think we're going to have a ton of communication, or a ton of applications. But I think that we should at least see them for a while and make sure that what we thought our policy was, is how it's being adopted. As I get into this, one of the other things that, uh, we have is a little section in here that's talking about the city properties, the redevelopment agency and the port. And if those properties are being utilized for this, I think that whatever standards we have, the highest possible standard should be put onto our own property. And the toughest ability to get a, a project through should be on the city property so that we're leading the way and showing people how this is done. And if we do it and take exception to any of these rules, whatever they may be, I think that's wrong. I think we should try to set the standard as high as we can, particularly on our own property. And then I, I, I guess I'm back to, uh, I think I'm on J. Of the whole thing. And I, this could be that I'm just not quite following what J means. But at the end of the sentence of J, it says, single, single purpose monopoles are prohibited. Now, is that just being a monopole in it, in and of itself? Does that mean we can't have a flagpole or a tree? I, I'm not quite sure.
It, it means a structure that was designed to only accept one, one carrier at its accept, at its inception.
But that's truly what a flagpole would be, right? It'd just be one carrier on it.
It's certainly possible they could accommodate more than one.
I don't think it'd be high enough, David. It would be our problem.
Well, there's some, we've seen some elsewhere, I've, you know, especially, I know there's one down in Elk Grove off ninety-nine. It's, it's gotta be a hundred feet tall.
Oh, that may be true. Oh, well, I was just trying to understand that section. As I got all the way down there, it says, single purpose poles are prohibited.
And that, that is something we're carrying forward from the existing policy, you know, which, uh, but in this case, that was, in the exist, under existing policy, that single purpose monopole structure, that's where the five hundred feet from established residential, you know, comes in. And now with our new policy, uh, we're trying to do away with those, the single purpose monopoles, you know, period. Because basically, steffing is essentially required now, and we are requiring all facilities to be designed to accommodate the co-locations, you know, from a structural standpoint, et cetera. So we're, we're, so that's, it's, it's the same theme we have been doing now, but we're trying to reinforce the steffing, which is really, uh, I think the, the most substantive new aspect of the new policy is that steffing, in most cases, is going, in almost all cases, is going to be mandatory. And now we are, you know, being more, more objective about the single purpose monopole, which is kind of the old-fashioned ones that, you know, we've had in town for years, that, I don't, I don't know how, how likely those type of structures are to be built these days anyway. But so we're, we're trying to be more specific on what, by getting rid of the single purpose monopole design. That's a problem on two levels. One, it's from a design standpoint, it's not employing any steffing, you know, tree, the wind, the windmill, the flagpole, et cetera. But also, those are facilities that were by their very nature are built for one carrier, one carrier only. And that's what we want to really get away from, um, to the extent anybody wants to do that.
And then I, is my last comment in here is just dealing with, I was trying to see if we could be even a little clearer for people to understand that if you took an existing structure, be it Tower Mart, the town center, and that stuff was all hidden inside a built, an existing building, that there really is no restriction on that.
Yeah, we, yeah, we've tried, we tried to tee this up in that manner, that if someone were to try one of those applications, that's what we would probably prefer to see.
Right. And, but I just, you know, all the way through this, as I read it, you know, there's so much that's prohibited. But I was trying to find the one that says, and if you really want to bypass the setbacks, here's what you do and here's exactly how it works. And it's talking about it in a couple of different locations, but I was just trying to see if we shouldn't have something that everybody really understood clearly, that that was something that we didn't even want to talk about.
Yeah, in the section G under permits, and then the, which is the zoning administrator section, there's three line items in there that describe those, those type of scenarios where it's building mounted, roof mounted, or otherwise, you know, concealed within, you know, some type of structure. You know, similarly say how, for example, how it's done at the, um, the IKEA sign out there, where there's actually wireless facilities inside there that most people probably aren't even aware of. And certainly we hope to be able to get, you know, building mounted and roof mounted signs, I mean, signs, um, facilities once, as we get buildings that are of sufficient height, where that becomes desirable for those carriers.
I hope that, that's the section I felt it was in also, but I was just hoping that, I'm sure if you're a wireless company, you're going to go, that's what I could do, they'll make it work. I was just looking for it to be a little clearer in that section, but I'm not sure that it's bad. It's just, I was hoping, you know, when it always says you're permitted, you're prohibited from doing this and this and this, there's this grand section that says, and if you really want to get it done, here's the easy way, you put it in the building, you know?
Perhaps for organizational purposes, maybe we move the prohibited facilities towards the, the back of the policy and move the, what we do want, you know, upfront.
You know, that's a very good thought. That's, that's a great idea, because that makes sense to me. If you're really telling them, here's what we want to do, then that's good. And then when you get to the end of it, you say, and here's stuff you absolutely can't do. And that, that makes a lot of sense to me. That really does.
Well, and one, one aspect of the three areas that David was talking about that we feel helps incentivize that is those three items, if you do it enclosed in a building and a sign on a roof, you, you get to use the zoning administrator process, uh, which is more, will expedite it for, for them. And we, we see that as a bit of a, as a carrot to hopefully en- encourage companies to actually do those type of facilities.
And you know, that would go back to my initial comment about the zoning administrator action and that it need to, needs to come here for final approval. That would be an area where I don't think you would need to do that. I think that's something that you could, we could say the zoning administrator's done it, and then I'd like to be informed that we did it, you know, or that, you know, the zoning administrator did that. But that could be the informational item. But I, I'm back to if you're going to actually build something in a structure, a tree or whatever, I think that one needs to come still back before the planning commission.
I think the most likely scenario for the facilities that we, you know, think we may get, um, particularly, particularly in, in Southport, they will be of the, the, the planning commission variety. You know, the industrial sites that would be under the zoning administrator category are, you know, relatively well spoken for. You know, more than likely, we're going to be in a, you know, scenario of, you know, being within some proximity to residential, which, and as was, is the case with the current policy, those would come to the planning commission. So there's probably a, a limited amount that will come under the zoning administrator, um, heading. But, you know, as, we certainly can, you know, work on a system where those can be provided. But my, my suspicion is that, um, most of the ones we'll see, you know, coming for the foreseeable future will be of the full planning commission, um, requirement to be here in a full, formal public hearing.
So then my one question, so I can end this. Am I three minutes yet? I just check it. If our height limit is thirty feet higher, why did that tree down by Vickers just look so out of place? Did we go thirty feet higher of commercial or thirty feet higher than residential?
We did thirty feet higher than the commercial zoning of that property, which has a fifty-five foot height limit on it in that, uh, C-three zone. So the fifty-five and the, the thirty, which they're entitled to under the.
Would be eighty-five, which is what it was. What would residential be next to it then?
Thirty, 35, it's rural residential, 35 or-
Well, I think it's just residential, David. I don't think it's rural there.
Yeah, the, the one-acre lots on that east side of Allen over there are rural residential, and height limit in that zone, for our memories, either 35 or 40 feet.
What about regular residential? Same thing?
It's 35, I think, in, in single family, 40, 35 to 40 in single families. So, under existing municipal code, which has been in place for a long time, these types of facilities are automatically eligible for, you know, 30-foot height limit. And the planning commission, via use permit, is even empowered to grant an additional 30 feet on top of that.
So my, my area of discussion, when we talk about height, is that, you know, are we really talking about where it's at, or where it's next to? And that might be a height discussion issue. Okay.
I actually am considering going to Joe next, given you had additional concerns.
Well, I actually have a few questions. I don't have much of an issue with towers that are hidden within existing structures and buildings. And I wouldn't have much of an issue with changing the buffer. I, I was fine with the 500-foot buffer. I thought that gave adequate distance from residential neighborhoods. And I, I guess I just need to understand the map. With the way the map is identified at 500 feet, there are, are some, as Charlie said, some areas that are still available. Would we be able to get, go ahead?
Well, yeah, I think we should maybe expand on that a little bit to make sure we're, you know, that it's clear what the map, you know, is showing.
Well, I guess, I guess my question, maybe you could just answer this, you know, maintaining the 500-foot buffer, would we be able to get adequate coverage in the Southport area with the existing spaces that are identified?
The, realistically, when you look at the 500-foot map, the only areas that are available for coverage is really Southport Industrial Park. The map is a bit deceiving. You see some areas that look like they're open on the east side of Southport along the river. However, when you take into consideration our flood control measures that are going to kick in, those, those parcels are not actually there for development.
On this, on this map, the, the areas that are, you know, I think, kind of shaded in white with the, with the speck, are the areas that would be available. One of them would be Bees Lakes, which is realistically not an option. And then the other one would be the O'Call Bend in that site, which all but certainly will be consumed by levy improvements. There's a little sliver in the Yarborough, some of the open space area, which could be, you know, part of the golf course. And then there's a little sliver up in the northeast end, in the, where currently the Corps is building a levy improvement project. So realistically, at 500 feet, other than in Seaway and in Southport Business Park, there's, there's almost nowhere one could go and not, and be more than 500 feet away from existing residentially-zoned properties.
So, so as my understanding, when, when we were talking about the tower that was gonna go up, that that was the, that was the spot that was missing to really give us the coverage we needed in that Southport area?
Well, that certainly would have provided coverage within that kind of neighborhood that's over there along the Linded Loop. It would not have covered Southport entirely, but it certainly would have, you know, put a facility in the middle, because currently, the facilities in Southport are in the northwest corner, the northeast corner, and in the southeast corner. And there's really, you know, there's, well, not really, there's nothing really in the middle, you know, of that area, and there's nothing in the southwest village either. So that facility certainly would have provided coverage, you know, the, within that Linded Loop, the Summerfield, maybe even the eastern edge of Bridgeway Island. But it was never intended, or could have, covered the entirety of Southport.
Okay, so, so I, all right. So maybe you can clarify on the coverage itself. Is a tower's usage, say we had a tower where that, that tower went, and we, we sort of closed off that area net. As, as, as usage increases in that area, does a tower have a limited, limited capacity to handle calls coming in? Could you possibly need a tower, you know, say, 20 feet away from another to handle other calls to cover that area?
Well, what ends up, what ends up happening as, as demand grows on the network, it shrinks the geographic area by which that tower has capacity to serve. And so many, you know, most carriers have coverage. They're trying to build capacity. And as usage grows, and particularly on the data side of things, which is the really big draw on their networks nowadays, those, those, what those towers will cover, the cells, you know, using the old cellular technology, actually shrink. And so it certainly is conceivable that in the future, as those neighborhoods fill in, the existing facilities, the amount of geographic area that they cover will shrink.
So, so you, 20 years down the road, we'll need, you know, we could need double the towers in that same area? Based on-
I'd venture to say perhaps more like in, you know, five or 10 years, as the way the data usage is increasing with smartphones, tablets, you know, PS3s, everything being streamed.
Right.
So that-
So, let me just say, the way, I don't have a lot of problems with the way this is written, if we're gonna go in that direction. I think you've made it as palatable as possible, if we're gonna eliminate the buffers. And I think it's written well. I just want to know that, um, so, well, you brought in an issue of public safety that also concerned me. And the city's gonna go to the reverse 911 system, I think they said, in a year?
Well, we have it now, but it only works with landlines.
Only works with landlines, but they're gonna go to-
They will set up where people can voluntarily register their cellphone, so that they will get those calls. And then that cellphone will, also, most importantly, would be tied to a physical address. This other element we've talked about in the past is, you know, 70% of 911 calls come from wireless phones.
Right.
Yet those wireless phones are not tied to a physical address. And so those go to the, currently, I believe, they go to those, when you call 911 from your cellphone, it goes to CHP, and CHP has to figure out what's going on, and they have to route that, you know, to-
Locals, yeah.
Yeah, local dispatch for whatever you need.
Do you know if we, and you guys may not know this, do we have, there's a lot of, I read a stat somewhere where a lot, there's a huge increase of cellphone-only households.
It's, nationwide, it's at least a quarter at this point. And we have no reason to believe that our, our city would be, you know, greatly, you know, different, you know, from that.
So, I, I guess what I'm asking is, and what I kind of feel like I'm getting at, is without making these towers available, there could be a public safety issue is what, what we're getting at with that, correct?
Well, we, we believe that people having adequate wireless coverage in their, at their residence is important as it pertains to reverse 911, to the extent they do not have landlines. If that 25% applies to our city, then that is roughly 4,000 households that would not receive the reverse 911 calls, because they don't have a landline.
At, at some point, but, but right now, and, and we saw that stat that Ms. Hill brought in regarding drop calls. And to me, that was a minimal number of, of lost calls, considering the number of calls that come out of that area. But we're just, you're projecting towards the future as, as, as usage increases, as smartphone increases, usage increases, that those numbers will increase?
Well, certainly, as it stands right now, you know, if you assume that 25% statistic applies to us, which we have certainly no reason to believe that it doesn't, then already, under our, our existing system, the fact that those, those so many people do not have landlines anymore, again, there's a roughly 16,000 households in, in the city. So already, currently, 4,000 households would not be receiving reverse 911 calls when those are used.
If, if they didn't have coverage.
Well, as it stands right now, because they don't have a landline, and right now, the reverse 911 only works with landlines.
No, I, I understand, I understand. But what I'm saying is, it, when we go to that, if there's a coverage gap based on not adding those towers, then, then they, they may not get that call.
Certainly, certainly that is the case. If, if, even if people can add their wireless phones, if they do not work, you know, at their residence, then being a part of the reverse 911 system is, you know, it doesn't, it doesn't mean anything at that point. So that, that is one element of this that, you know, we certainly believe is important. It's, doesn't mean that we want to override all the other matters that have been discussed, but it is an element of this that, you know, we think is important and should be part of the equation, is getting wireless coverage to persons is not, you know, simply for, for convenience. It, it does have a public safety element to it.
Well, to me, that's actually probably one of the most important elements of this, of this whole thing. So at 500, at 300, and even at 300, you're saying there's minimal, minimal options?
I mean, with, and we all recognize that, you know, Southport is primarily residential, other than the Business Park and Seaway, which are up in the north and northwest portions. So it's, I don't think it should become as a great surprise that there are limited locations in Southport, other than those two areas, that are more than, you know, 300 or more than 500 feet away from any existing residentially-zoned properties. You know, this was kind of our empirical suspicion, but we, when we had our IT and GIS colleagues prepare these maps for this exercise, it was a lot more, I think, shocking to us, you know, when you look at it graphically and spatially, that there are so few limited locations. And even those, some of those locations that are available, practically speaking, may not be available, because they're right along the river and are, you know, certainly, if they're not gonna be consumed by levy, there will be a levy setback from those areas. And again, they're on the periphery anyway, so they may not be that advantageous to carriers if they're on the periphery. And if, we have learned that if they are on the periphery, then they also need to be a lot taller. So we certainly are struggling with this, and we recognize where the commission, it was coming from in our past discussions about this topic, and even when we were talking about that one on the Vickers property. And we remain struggling with it, but it is, we have some factors here that are, kind of, they are what they are. We're primarily residential down there. That's not, not going to change. We are unlikely to get a lot of buildings, certainly in those areas, that would be tall, tall enough to likely accommodate facade or roof mounting, equation, applications. So we are at a situation where we will need, if wireless coverage is gonna be provided to those residential areas that are currently not well-served, we are looking at some form of pole, be it a tree, be it a windmill, be it, you know, whatever application you want to do. That is the most likely scenario. So we're trying to figure out the best way to accommodate those kinds of things with some parameters and still full planning commission review. But those are the most likely types of projects where you expect to come before the commission. So we wanted to adapt the policy as best we could with our resources that we have available to keep the commission's goals and these, and much of the goals that were in the original policy are very much still applicable, and we've carried those through. What we have attempted to do here is adjust some of the procedures, so how to handle these. And then to also make those changes that are necessary to get the policy compliant with state and federal law, was we don't, we wouldn't want the entire policy to be invalidated and have nothing. So it's, this is important to try to, try to do the best we can for all of us, even though we have limited resources, you know, to try to get the policy to be as good as it can be and remain compliant with evolving state and federal law.
So, and remind me, David, is there a provision in there to, for a prospective tower company to show a need for the, for the tower?
Oh, absolutely, yeah. We, that's, that's number one, and that's, they, you know, these are expensive facilities for them to build, so they don't build them, you know, willy-nilly. They-
Well, but the independents are in it for the, for the profit piece of it, right? I mean, that, like Ms. Hill's company, they're making a profit, and so-
Well, the wireless, these facilities cost the wireless companies, because they have to not only construct the facility, maintain it, then they have, they're paying rent every month to the underlying landowner. So there is quite the calculus that they have to go through. It's not, you know, merely a matter of what site would give them the best, you know, technological need. You know, they have to find a piece of ground that someone will lease to them, and at a rate that they're willing to pay. And so there's, that's one element of this that's important, that, you know, frankly, at Estafa, we don't have a great understanding of, is more of the economics of these facilities. You know, we've done a little bit of research. You know, we know that the tree poles and other things are costing, can cost, you know, well into the six figures. And then not to mention that they're paying rent every month to the underlying landowner. And then they have all their upfront costs of doing, securing all of that, so-
But they're, they're charging the, the, the companies that occupy their, their tower.
Well, certainly a tower, yeah, certainly a tower company-
So we're not gonna have a competition, I mean, somebody might, else might not be able to come in and say, "Look, we want to put a tower across the street to compete at a, at a lower rate."
Well, they-
To take a pencil it out.
Yeah, and, you know, I don't know what, how much receptiveness is there is to, by various property owners, you know, to host one of these, you know, on their, on their site. You know, we don't have a good, good insight into that as to just how hard it is for a tower company or a carrier to find a willing landowner, you know, who will rent them, you know, a couple thousand feet of ground and, and for, because the going rate for rents on these is not that substantial. We were surprised. We, some of the empirical knowledge we have is the ground rents are maybe 2,000 a month, or plus or minus a little bit, which, you know, is not insignificant, but it is not a, it's not a goldmine for any property owner, either necessarily.
Okay. Thank you. Just reflecting back on this drop hole, the reason I went in that order, I wanted to hear your concerns first. And some of the, the points that I heard, I, I think I have some suggestions for, to, to maybe get us past a couple of those concerns. I'll, I'll hold off on suggestions until, until later, but I think we can actually still move through this. At least that's my, my gut feeling at this point. So I would like to continue with the, with the comments and questions, and, and try and work through this and move it forward. Mr. Chase, did you have any more questions?
I did. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Listening to this whole thing, I finally, I think, understood the, the, the three maps and the location. But I think what threw me off is that the, the white zones that are the available sites or locations don't, aren't in the legend. And so I think it would be very helpful if they were an element of the legend on each map.
Yeah, we, you know, we certainly-
Just a, you know, just a, a comment. That, it finally came to me, but I think that would help. Like I say, a few of my thoughts were, were kind of more editing, but a few jumped out that I'd just like to throw out. We reference the classic monopole several times in, in, you know, basically as a non-desirable and prohibited-type structure. Yet we've eliminated, I think on the, on the first page, we've eliminated the definition of a monopole. And I would think that if we are gonna prohibit and reference it, we should perhaps have a pretty clear definition of what that is in there. Again, we mentioned on the third page, including monopoles, but what are monopoles? So I think if we let people know that, it would be very helpful. Again, as Mr. Moore said, I don't have page numbers here, but I think under G, and then follow the numbers through to, uh, gee, it's, it's hard to reference it. It's gonna be probably the, let's see, yeah, one, two, three. It's G, and then we go, you know, one through F, two. Okay, it's G2, and then dropping down in the middle of that page, again, to the, granting a wireless permit to the extent, maximum extent, which is reasonably feasible, the proposed structure. I, I just was wondering if we need to, is, is that term reasonably feasible legally defensible? Or does that need to be tightened down a bit? I throw that out for consideration.
I think that, that language was added in an effort to balance the rules we operate under, under federal law, to say, we have some, we retain some discretion on aesthetics and placement and design, but we have to balance that against demonstrated need. And so that's where the reasonably feasible concept came from.
So you're comfortable with that, Jeff, the way it's written? So you're comfortable with that, Jeff, the way it's written? Think, okay, I'll jump to it. Um, back to the height, I had a question on that. I, what I've heard, Kathy, I think you mentioned the, we're almost by right allowed thirty feet over the height allowed in that particular zone where the tower would occur, then, then that establishes the height for that element, that tower. What confuses me then is under J two, additions or modifications to existing legally established towers, facilities may be permitted, as I read it, to increase an additional thirty percent over that starting height. So there'd, there'd kind of be two potential bumps in height there, and I'm not sure that, that's what we want.
And they still can't just exceed the over, overall allowable height, you know, for that zone. This particular provision is, is largely in the existing policy, and it does allow an existing pole to be increased in height under the zoning administrator provision. But that's still, that still cannot exceed whatever otherwise is allowable in that area.
Could, could that be clarified a bit in the document? I think, you know, other than some editing, those were really my, my comments at this point in time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Down to Jeremy. Do you have any questions or comments?
Yeah. Would it make sense to have two policies, one for co-located towers and one for monopoles? Is that, I mean, it seems like the, it seems like the diversity between the two po- I mean, it seems like where this policy diverges is based on that. I mean, it's, it's, it's like a twenty-five percent overlap each other, and then seventy-five percent of it is, one is dealing with single, one is mono, and then the other one is the, the co-located one.
Well, I, I think our-
I mean, is that, I guess my question is, is that something we, we could do? Have a separate policy, one for co-located and one for monopole?
Well, presumably, we could, you know, set that up and have, you know, different procedures for each. In our effort here, we're actually trying to, you know, effectively, you know, get rid of the old-fashioned monopoles by rec- primarily requiring the stealthing and the co-location. And so I'm not certain what we would gain by having a, a separate, you know, distinct policy.
The monopole policy would be very restrictive and would effectively get rid of that. And whereas the co-located poles would be very, would be the looser one and would encourage companies to either build and sign longer-term contracts with their fellow lessees to get on those towers.
Our, you know, based on what we've been experiencing over the last, you know, you know, five to ten years on these, and, you know, how we foresee these going in the future is that the, the primary issue in, in our city, and if you look at the, one of the maps that shows where the various facilities are located, the areas where the carriers show interest are those areas that are either in or close to residential. And that's, that's the area we've, we focused on. The industrial areas of town are, are pretty well-served with numerous poles that have been there for a long time, and many of those are of the old-fashioned monopole design. So our emphasis on this has been how to treat with where they are respect to residential. And since obviously those are, we struggled quite a bit with the one project that's, you know, it's still pending out there. So we've put our emphasis on the design of the facilities in anticipation of seeing more of them come next to residential and knowing full well that there's, it's highly unlikely that a traditional monopole would receive support, you know, in and around residential areas, that that's kind of our, our reading of it and, and has been, you know, for a long time. So we haven't created a separate policy, believe we can accomplish the objectives related to the two, you know, and all into one policy, as has been in the past. And we are, we've emphasized how, design features and other matters and co-locations with the, you know, full knowledge that the challenge is, is when these facilities want to go within residential areas. And those are areas where we would not expect a traditional monopole to be proposed. Because that's, again, we're probably, we're not anticipate that having a lot of support. So I would not see a large amount to gain by having, you know, two separate and distinct policies. You know, we believe that we can accomplish those objectives, you know, in the body of one policy and then have, you know, one procedural, you know, system set up to treat these, these different scenarios. So certainly if someone were to propose a monopole in the old-fashioned sense, you know, in industrial area, you know, that may, may not be problematic. You know, with last one we approved like that was about three years ago. Feel like those areas already are, are pretty well-served, and just the phone calls we get, folks aren't asking about those areas. They're always asking about various sites in and around existing residential neighborhoods where they are trying to get better coverage to people in their homes. All the calls I get are about, are about residential, or very close to residential. So that's been our emphasis in these revisions, because that's, we just expect to see more of that going forward.
Okay. Um, I, I just, I mean, we have this policy for co-location. We want to encourage that, and that's, it isn't a hundred percent clear to me what parts of these apply to co-located facilities and which ones are monopole requirements. I mean, that, and that's just a, I mean, it's just a general edit, you know, maybe it's a, just a wording issue.
We are essentially proposing now to prohibit those facilities that cannot accommodate co-locations. Other than, other than those that would be, you know, building mounted, facade mounted, where it's, it's really not a co-location in a traditional sense where you have a pole and then two or three carriers with their different antennas on that. We're trying to be a lot more objective about that now. More than, and make the policy more objective about that than it had been in the past when that was all that was being built at that time. You know, in, when this policy was written, there largely weren't having these stealth facilities, you know, constructed at that time. Obviously, since then, that is, there's probably at least a hundred different stealth applications out there that people employ in different places. And those are the type of facilities, again, with the belief that the, the real crux of the issue is when these facilities are proposed near residential. The, to us, the design of that facility is the most critical issue. And so that's where we put the stealthing in here, but also keeping in mind we have co-location goals. You know, so we can hopefully minimize the number of poles. Co-location to the extent we can and, uh, under law, we have built in here, and as it really has been in the policy all along, to encourage co-location. And so we've tried to do that by not only encouraging it and giving those co-located facilities perhaps a zoning administrator route versus full planning commission route, but to a large extent, we've also prohibited the single-purpose monopoles of that, that have been the rage in the past. So it's kind of a, you know, carrot and stick, if you will. Whereas stick is that we're really trying to get away from non-co-located facilities. The incentive is that if you are co-locating or facade mounting or roof mounting, then you may have a much shorter approval process to get that.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Blackburn?
Um, I think staff did a great job. I had a couple of questions that Charlie, Commissioner Moore brought up that have been already answered. I just have one comment I, or concern in the future. Mr. Tilly was mentioning about how data speeds and how tapped the different wi- wireless companies are going to be as far as if, if one company gets more customers in a particular area than others, it's going to really tap out these, these locations, and I just kind of worry about that. But as far as the way it's written, I don't have any other questions.
Thank you.
Or concerns?
Dean? And I, I'm similar to my colleague to my left. I, I think the staff did a, a good job. I'm, as I said from the straw poll, I'm ready to move this along. I think we need an appropriate liberal policy, I think, for the safety reasons, but also for property values. If we're the only town in the region that doesn't have cell coverage, I think that's a problem for us and for the residents. So that, that also concerns me, and as we were discussing this, I, I, I know we want to get it right, and I appreciate that. So I either want to move this forward, kind of as it is with some minimal changes, or I like Mr. Tilly's suggestion that we get some high-level guidance because there's other factors from the council and perhaps, so we can all have a better understanding of this ourselves. It, it takes some resources to educate us about making this decision and changing the policy. So I, I think we're, we're all going kind of from our folk, our own kind of, our own personal cellphone usage background or not. And, and I, I think maybe if, if we were going in that direction, I would, I would also suggest trying to have some resources that, that help us develop the best policy we can for the, for our city. So I either like, for me, like to move this along with some minimal, not, you know, not, not a whole bunch of changes to what, what's come before because I actually do think we were heard and, and from our last debate. Or I'd like to suggest we take Mr. Tilly's suggestion and get some direction from council and some resources.
Thank you. I appreciated the emphasis of the building mounts and the location within structures and Kathy's use of the term carrot. I think we need to move forward with the carrot and stick approach, simply to manage the growth that we are experiencing. And the current policy was identified by this commission as inadequate, which is why we are looking at this policy right now. I did take some notes and just, well, wanted to see if there are minimal changes that we can identify to move this forward. Or at that time, maybe the commission should pause and think about moving it back to, to council. So I want to go through what I've identified as comments from the commission and see if we can make some identi- identify locations in the document where it's covered or make some simple changes. Mr., Mr. Moore brought up the locations within five hundred feet of residential. This had to do with height limitations to the other building. I, I actually left with kind of a question on this one, given that there's, there's already policy in place for the thirty feet above that zones, that zones height limits, and there's a kind of a catch twenty-two on this one as well. Increased height means decreased towers. If you decrease the height, you'll probably end up with increased towers, is my, my take on that. So I think we're at a catch twenty-two on that, and I'm not sure if there is a fix for that one. So I actually don't have a recommendation for that one. My next one was the, within five hundred feet require stealthing. It is required as, for the permitting process, if it comes to the planning commission, that towers within five hundred feet be, be stealthed if it's in residential. It is not if it is covered under the zoning administrative action. So under section G one, and I'm looking at the non-strike-through version, if you're in zones M one, M two, M three, and L, all of those, and you're within five hundred feet of residential, you're actually not required to be stealthed, if, if I'm reading it correctly. So my recommendation here would be to add under section G, which is approval process, section one, add a statement, facilities within five hundred feet of residential utilizes a stealth design. That would be consistent with the permits that come of, to, or the permit requests that come to the planning commission and make it just consistent across the board. Everything under five hundred feet within residential be stealthed as a, as a pole. I hear, I, I see Jeff kind of mumbling, so I'm, I'm, I want to make sure that we're, we're okay to do this.
Well, we're, well, we're just, we're talking how best to approach this. One approach would be to take the comments, not necessarily try to draft the exact words, because it's really difficult to take exact words and make sure that it doesn't create an issue somewhere else in the policy, but to write them down or write down the concepts and incorporate those into the draft that goes to council.
Okay.
Because there's, there's some additional cleanup, and I know one or two commissioners, I think, probably have some what they considered more editorial comments that didn't necessarily need to be, they may not have felt needed to be brought up, but they may want to pass them along to staff as just kind of some of that cleanup.
Okay.
Up to you, but that's just a suggestion.
Okay, that was a recommended text. I guess it can be considered and adjusted as necessary. I'm hoping that we can actually move on this item still tonight, which is why I think I was trying to be so precise. So if we can move on this item while maintaining flexibility with staff, I think that would be great. Okay. The next thing I heard, it had to do with the, uh, comment on having multiple towers on thirty acres. There is a, a provision in here that currently limits towers within fifteen hundred feet of each other if there is capacity on the tower. So we cannot permit tower, new tower within fifteen hundred feet if there's capacity on the other. If you're comfortable with that distance, I, I didn't hear any other comments about that actually being a distance issue.
Actually, I do have a comment on that. I, I don't read it the same way.
Yeah, oh, okay.
I read that as being if that situation exists, if the proposed location is within a thousand feet of an existing tower with no co-location capacity or fifteen hundred feet of one width, then a permit by the planning commission is required, but it's not a prohibition.
That is, that is correct.
Okay.
The, the G two, the, the five items under G two are all-
Thank you, thank you for the clarification. So it would not prohibit it, it would bring it back to the planning commission at that point for consideration.
And our, our reasoning behind that, you know, really, it kind of stems from what we've experienced out in Southport Business Park, where there are two poles out there that are, one owns owned by one carrier, one is owned by the other carrier, and they're not co-located at all. We want to make sure that we don't indirectly, you know, grant, you know, one carrier an almost exclusive area where they can serve, and other facilities could not be built in that vicinity. And I gave this example of another carrier wanting to build one right next door to the Verizon Pole in Southport Business Park. If they wouldn't co-locate, then we wanted to set this up that was something that could be entertained, at least by the planning commission, rather than prohibiting them, because as much as we are trying to encourage co-location, you know, we can't, you know, guarantee that it will happen. And we don't want to give any carriers necessarily any advantage over the others if we can avoid it.
As for the other, other comments that I have that there are suggestions for, they are, in my opinion, minor editorial. Add the definition of a monopole, add white space to the map legend, and there's a clarification of increasing the tower height above thirty percent. I think those are simple editorial that if staff can handle those. I only had two more comments that I actually don't, don't exactly propose fixes for. The first is Jeremy's about having two separate policies, and again, I like the carrot and the stick approach. In this case, we have one section, it's currently G one, kind of being our carrot. And then the stick being the permitting process going through the planning commission, and I understand the irony behind that. But, you know, if we have to be the stick, I'll happily be that. Then the other one is on city property, be roughly as, as strict as possible with the towers. I don't know how to address, how I would address that one if, or if the, the commission feels the same way. But those are roughly the, the recommendations that I've heard, and, and those are what I, I tried to capture. I tried to capture all the recommendations that I, I'd heard.
I think they only, they only-
Just one comment.
Sure.
Since virtually except maybe Jeff and myself, no one else was here when we drafted this original proposal. Were you here, David?
No, I was before my time.
The reason we were given this job wasn't to make it hard on the cellphone carriers. It wasn't to do anything but protect the residents in the area. That was the mission we were given, which is how we came up with 500 feet, which is about as arbitrary as anything you could have. But it was something that we felt at least, I don't want a cellphone in my backyard. Neither did anybody else. And if you take this to the council even today, I think you would find that the comment's going to be, yeah, we know we have to help them a little bit, which I think we're doing by letting them, put them on buildings and things of that nature, but don't give away the world here because I still don't want one in my backyard. And neither did anybody else. That's how we came up with this. Now, I think what we've done is taken it a whole step further and made it a lot easier for everybody. But if you're down, if we're down to the one issue that still bothers me the most, it's the height limit. And the setback, if you're going to have a setback, if you, if you think you need a tower that desperately in somebody else's backyard, I still think you need a setback, which I think we've done somewhat. But I think you need to lower the height limit because you don't want it sitting out, standing up like that one did out there in Southport, behind Vickers, where everything is going to be 40 or 50 feet tall, except the tree that's going to be 80. I think, again, I'm trying to get back into the height limit area. If you're within that 500-foot limit, then maintain some, just like all, many of the other cities did, said, we maintain the level of height in that area because you're so close to residential. I'm looking on the map here, just for my own information, on Otis Avenue, on your map, attachment two, see Otis Avenue? And there's that little white spot by Otis Avenue, right? That tower could go right there instead of 500 feet further onto Jefferson Boulevard. You know, and I'm just making the comment that I, I see it's available there, and that is almost close to where you want to have a tower. You have another tower available up a little further that would probably put you closer. It's on Linden Road. It looks like a tower can go up on Linden Road, on that corner of Jefferson and Linden, rather than, rather than down Linden 500 feet because it's a bigger area. My only comment is, if it's going to be next to residential, keep your limits down. Because that's what we were, the rest of this is all fine. I'm just concerned about it being, if you have to, if you can't find any place other than next to residential, then make it strict on them. You may only get one tower in there, and it'll be expensive to build if it has to be a tree. But maybe that's what you have to do to protect your residents here. I'm all for the safety issue. I've never had my cellphone not work, but I'm sure, I've had a drop call before, so that does happen. But it happens in my area as well as Southport, so, and I didn't think it was extreme. I think all I'm trying to tell you is, that's why we were given this thing, was for aesthetics only. That's what it's for, primarily. Now, what Kathy and David have written takes in all these other things, it gives them tons of options, but protect your residents. Think about what you want in your backyard, and if you don't mind having a cell tower in your backyard, then you should vote for this in its entirety. If you think that you might not want to see a cell tower in your backyard, then try to protect somebody that might have to see it. And that's just, all you're doing is lowering the limits, and that's what I was saying before. But there are a number of areas available here. And I, for somebody to tell you there's nothing available, it's not true. Even if you want to take the setback from 500 to 300, at least you've opened a couple more areas. 100 wouldn't even cover the size of the cell tower, because most of the towers are going to be 50 to 80 feet high, so I think you have to have 500, 300 feet, whatever. But if you go to 100 feet, that might be too short, because the tower's 50, it's going to have to be 100-foot setback anyway. So, anyway, my comment is, I still think you have to think of that one little section in there that's talking about the tower, keeping the height down in that area, if the only place, because there is space available out there, and that's, it may not be what they can easily get their hands on, or it may not be at the price they want, like David said, but there's still space available. I'm just trying to protect the residents that are back there, and I think that's important too.
I do think there's a potential recommendation that could be made to address that, but I believe Ms. Sandin has a comment.
Thank you. Yeah, and with all due respect to you, Chair, I don't know if I'm actually now with more discussion, I'm not sure if I'm really ready to push this along, because now, if we're going to debate height and lowering heights, I think we need some expertise, because I can imagine that if we, if we start to, by this policy, start to lower some heights in places where these can go, we could end up with a proliferation, I mean, that's a concern of proliferation.
You could have a whole forest.
Well, we could have, yeah, we could build a whole forest, which might look prettier. I don't know. But I, you know, so then I started saying to my, thinking to myself, like, I don't know enough about this technology, what's ahead of us, the future, and if we're going to actually have something, I mean, that's kind of what you were saying, that in the beginning, when you developed this policy, you guys did your best, but, you know, it's not serving us longer than 15 years. And I think if we're just, if we're just going to move forward and start to propose things when we don't have the technological expertise, I worry about that, frankly, and I do worry about how it comports with federal law and regulations. So, I'm at this kind of point where I think we either, we either do an interim policy, if that's, if that's possible, or we actually do go back, as Mr. Tilly suggested, and try to get some resources to do this right. Because it is, it is, we do need to get this right.
I agree, we need to get this right. I actually, I thought we were actually getting, coming together, believe it or not. I know we're stumbling over this, but-
We're only down to one issue.
We, I think we've got one, one big request, which is below 500 feet stealth, which is against, again, aesthetics. So, it's an aesthetic change. And number two is, within 500 feet, possibly adjust the height to the residential zoning, instead of the zoning that it's located in.
I'm not, I didn't even say that.
Or the 30 feet above residential.
But Beverly brings up a great point, because as I tell you that I think the height limit should be in the zone it's at, like the other cities do, so it must not be all bad, because a number of other cities do the same thing. I wonder if it doesn't work? I don't know if it works or not. I just read what others did and said, if we're going to be within that 500 feet, I think we should be at a little lower height, like the other cities do, so that it doesn't stand out, and it's not an eyesore to the neighborhood. But the answer is, I don't know if it works. It sounds good to me, but I'm not.
The fix to that would be, or send it to the planning commission.
Or send it to the council.
Or, oh, you mean, hold on, I meant, in the case that, limit it to the zone that it's in, not the 30 feet above, or send it to planning commission for-
Yeah, well, for an exception, yes.
We would need additional municipal code changes to remove that additional 30 feet that they're eligible for by right, I know, which we do not have teed up for you. I would like just to remind the commission that, really with this going forward, you know, procedurally, things are really not going to be that different the way we have done them before. Any of the poles and the near-residential or un-residential zones are going to come to the commission in a discretionary review, as they have been in the past. And yes, under current zoning, they could propose a top, you know, a height of, you know, in the case of the Vickers, you know, 80 feet. But still, to be able to approve that facility there at 40 feet, 50 feet, 80 feet, whatever it is, the commission will still be required to make these findings in here. And the commission may or may not be able to make those on, you know, any given project that comes before it. So, we're not giving up any real discretion with these changes. In our estimation, we believe that the policy in many ways is actually stricter than our existing policy, because now we require, in this new policy, we will require stealthing, which we do not, we always encourage and talk about, but we do not formally require an existing policy, because at that time, it really wasn't done. We have the spacing requirements in there now, which is not something that was under the existing policy. And we've tried to do what we can to strengthen the goal of co-location, which is also related to heights, in that the, if the, the lower the poles, the less opportunities there are for co-location. So, we really wrestle with these, you know, trade-offs, and we wanted to make sure that if we, if we took the heights down to, you know, a level that the commission is comfortable with, we want to make sure we're not prohibiting, indirectly prohibiting everything, because we require co-location, but if they're too low, they can't co-locate, so then we're kind of stuck. And that's not where we want to be either. You know, our looking at the various co-locations around town, there's none of them that are at less than 50 feet that we could find, you know, on any of the existing poles. So, it, we still are struggling, but if, you know, if this, if this policy revisions were in place, and we took up, you know, one of the two that are, you know, still, that are pending right now in town, which are certainly within 500 feet of residential, you know, commission would still retain a high degree of discretion, you know, over those projects, and to approve them would still be, need to make these findings that are requested in here. And, you know, it's, who knows right now if those findings could be met for either of those projects or anyone to come in the future. So, we just want to make sure we're not, you know, we're not, you know, giving away the store here, or all of a sudden tomorrow, a bunch of poles are going to, you know, sprout up in town. And we, again, we believe that this, these revisions make the policy somewhat stricter than the current policy is.
I totally agree with what he said.
Mm-hmm. And I'm, I'm-
I just don't agree that it's not our job to protect the residents.
It's also our job to, in this case, to set policy. And we have a policy issue at hand that needs to be corrected. I am less inclined to send it to council, because I also know how busy they are right now. And that's not an excuse, but they have their hands full. And this is a policy document that I think that we can handle, and that we should be able to move forward. And if not, then if we can't move it forward with, with suggested changes, yes, shoot to council, but I'm willing to move it forward, so. Hamilton?
Good evening, Commission. After listening to everyone, I think you all are fairly close, and we have heard you on your comments. I think we could move this forward in its current form with maybe a few edits to clarify things, but then also note the height concern, the setback concern. I seem to hear that the 500 feet is important, at least with having it come back to the planning commission for discretionary review. How far it is set back allowed, you know, next to a residential zone is something that's still very much up in the air. Right now, we have it at twice the height of the tower, but that's something we could say, that is something that still, you know, the commission hasn't made a complete decision on that. And that it may appear that the majority of you think that it should be a little greater than that. Would that be a fair statement to say that twice the height of a tower may not be enough to be set back from residential?
It's fair, from my opinion, actually.
So, that's kind of what I'm hearing. So, we could, we could represent that to the council. Again, you're making a recommendation to them, so typically, when we have some of these where you have concerns, but you don't quite have the solution as a majority, we typically say, these are some of the concerns that came up. Here's the reasoning behind that, that was described by various commissioners, and here are some things that staff is recommending to address that. So, I think you guys are close, and I know this has been difficult, so. But I'm not sure that, you know, we offered up sending it to the council, because this is something we have been limited on. But I don't know how much we will get from bringing on a consultant to try to help us unwind this. We might still end up back where we are, just a few months down the road, so.
I guess I would be willing to go with that approach, to make a recommendation to council that, of this document, that they approve this document, and with our additional recommendations, if, unless we feel solid in moving forward on it, as is with our recommendations. I guess I'm looking forward.
So, let me go, let me go over real quick the ones that I think that we need to highlight to council as having concerns, but not necessarily having it fully addressed just yet. So, that would be the height, whether it's based on the zone the tower is proposed to be in, or the adjacent zone, that's one on the height. Whether it should be allowed to extend beyond the height for that zone, in other words, the additional 30 percent or the additional 30 feet. So, that's the second one on the height. Then also, whether or not the setback from residential, what should that be at a bare minimum? Should it be some component of the height, or should it just be a specific number, like 300 feet? And then the other thing that I had was what? Stealthing within 500 feet of residential, irregardless of the zone, I think that's something-
I think that's all there was.
We're going to put in anyway. So, I think-
The height aspect is our most challenging matter, because-
That's the challenging one.
We can't affect that solely within the bounds of this policy, that requires other municipal code changes. So, we cannot do that, you know, tonight, insert that into this policy. But that certainly is a matter we will carry forth to the planning commission.
We can raise it, yeah, to the council.
Because we'll be doing additional zoning ordinance changes, you know, coming up over the next several months anyway.
We'll be back.
But we just can't, can't do it within the matter of this, within the bounds of this document.
David, do I recall that to have more than a single-use pole, it has to be at 80 feet? You can't have a 50-foot multi-use pole. I thought Ms. Hill said to accommodate, you know, three carriers, you had to have them at, the minimum height was, I thought about, you had to have a certain distance between the carrier's equipment, and I thought 80 was what was needed.
Well, 80 on that one, you know, since it's a spec pole, you know, they are providing, you know, somewhat additional room between the carriers, perhaps a little bit more than what is truly needed, but it's probably preferable. But also, for the tree, you know, the top, and the antennas on that one are mounted at around 70 to 75 feet. I mean, they wanted essentially have, you know, another 50 on top to complete the tree, put a crown on it, and not just be a tree with, that's just like, looks like it's been topped. So, you know, at 80 feet is, certainly would be optimal.
Is there a minimum height for, say, let's say, a three-user pole?
I would say it's probably at least 70, realistically, because the lowest one on, the most, most co-located one we have is the tree pole that we have, and that's, that one is 92 feet tall, and they have crammed five carriers in between 50 feet and the top. So-
So, the height issue, it's really either, are we going to allow single-use poles, or are we going to stay with the, with the multi-use poles and allow those 70-foot poles in there?
That is the crux of what we've been wrestling with.
And that's really, and I think that goes back to Charlie's point of, do I want a 70-foot pole in my backyard?
If we start lowering the heights, that, you know, just empirically decreases the possibility for co-location, which therefore then increases the number of poles potentially.
I would have much less heartache with a much shorter pole, but then we go to the single use.
Yeah, maybe.
And maybe.
If that's-
Depending where it was, and how it stood out.
Yeah, that's what we need, we would need information about, is the trade-offs more between heights and co-location. And hence, that's why, at least for now, we have proposed not to mess around with the height matter- height matter, you know, to noting that these projects at least are, you know, still remain within the commission's discretion going forward because we don't have a good understanding of those relationships. We only have an empirical understanding. So, we're hoping that the way the policy is written, you know, we can dress with these projects with the heights issues we have in mind, noting for well, the planning commission still retains full discretion over all of these projects, you know, as they come forward. And if those projects cannot meet the findings, then they won't be approved and that's, that's the end of it. Um, but we, you know, the height matters are much more, and co-location, those relationships are much more complex than we have the, the ability to delve into right now, given our, where we are, you know, resource-wise.
Okay, with that, I'm, uh, willing to entertain a motion. Be it moving to council, uh, making a recommendation to council with the, um-
The two matters of height-
Correct.
And the setback issue, the minimum setback from residential.
And I'm assuming, uh, that it would include the steffing, uh, comment?
Yes. And if the others that you had some editorial comments that you didn't necessarily share, um, feel free to send them on to staff. This, this won't be approaching council if you choose to move it forward until October nineteenth at the earliest because the October fifth meeting is likely to be canceled.
One, one other comment before they vote. I think one of the things we really talked about and David brought up, he says, maybe we should kind of reverse some of the order where we show all the positive things at the beginning-
That was the other one.
And the negative, I think that was the last comment that was made.
And we will incorporate that. So, that won't necessarily be a recommendation. We'll actually make that change before it approaches council.
That made a lot sense to me.
Yes, it did.
Yeah, the incentives, incentives first. I like that idea.
I would like to move that we, we, we do move this, uh, item forward with the modifications that Charlene has talked about, that all of us have offered up and, um, get, uh, move it to council, get their input. And, and again, I think height is the biggest issue, but you've, you've touched on that and that's, we would go from there, so.
Point, point of clarification, uh, to get their input or as a recommendation for their adoption?
Mm-hmm.
I'm looking for a clarification on that.
Would they send it back to us?
They might.
That's what I was wondering, okay.
So, I mean, I, I'm, I'm sorry, I don't mean to stop, but I mean, if we send it to them and say, we still don't understand this, they may tell you, you need to find out the information and-
They have referred, referred things back in the past when-
Or they may make that decision.
Or they may make the decision. I mean, we'll try our best to get more information from the industry by that time relative to height.
The clarification I was looking for is, uh, Mr. Chase, are you, um, moving that this be a recommendation to council or?
I wasn't sure it was at first, but, understanding, I think, the logistics of it now, um, it, it does appear, I think, to keep this moving, that, that would be a part of my, uh, part of my motion, that it may not come back to us, but that we are sufficiently agreed with this that we're comfortable moving it forward. So, I so move that.
I'll second that motion.
Moved by Mr. Chase, uh, seconded by Ms. Sandin. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed?
No.
Uh, that is two noes.
So, recommendations move to, uh, council. Thank you very much. Hopefully this staff has enough to, to move on for this.
Yes.
All right.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is informal discussion. Hearing none, uh, looking for a motion?
Motion to adjourn?
Seconded, uh, moved by Mr. Moore, seconded by Mr. Chase. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hearing none.